Testing.
We're all set.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the November 1st meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that is posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabavariano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 18th, 2023 school committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Good evening to our audience. I'd like to begin my superintendent's report by addressing the resignation of some of the members of the English Language or what we call EL Task Force, which took place yesterday. First, on behalf of the district, I would like to thank the members for their years of service and deeply appreciate their advocacy for Boston's multilingual students. Second, I want to acknowledge that the status quo, I think we can all agree, is not working for our multilingual learners based on decades of data and DESI's guidance. We know from our most recent MCAS results that our multilingual learners are five times less likely to be reading on grade level than their peers. The data is clear. We must change the way that we are serving our multilingual learners. Our district's committed to adopting inclusive practices so that multilingual learners have access to native language support while receiving their required ESL services and while also engaging in learning alongside their peers. Our Inclusive Education Plan calls for the district to shift our current practices of isolating our multilingual students to practices that align with DESI's definition of SEI. DESI defines an SEI classroom as a classroom with at least one English learner where SEI-endorsed content-licensed educators shelter instruction so that English learners can meaningfully engage with grade-level content and develop discipline-specific academic language. We are committed to doing better for our students and working with the community to move this work forward. Since the Task Force is an official body of the school committee, I know the chair is working with staff to figure out next steps for the ELL Task Force. I'd like to next address for school committee and the public our Exam School Memo that we've compiled. This is a follow-up on a request for information on the process that led to the current Exam Schools admissions policy. Today, you received a detailed memo explaining how the policy was developed, including the distribution of additional points. We want to ensure that all members and the public have the historical context and rationale for the policy decisions and recommendations that were made by the Exam School Admissions Task Force and subsequently approved by this body. The memo details or includes four key areas. The first, a review of the Task Force's discussions between March and July of 2021 and why particular recommendations were made. Section two is around a timeline for the public and school committee of the admissions process, including when the school committee will receive additional updates. Section three addresses responses to specific questions that were made between the October 4th and the October 18th meetings from particular committee members. And then the last section, we titled considerations for potential recommendations. The memo is publicly available on the school committee's website, at www.bostonpublicschools-schoolcommittee, all lowercase. Next, I'd like to share a few bright spots. There were very many last week. First of all, an invitation. Please join us at the BPS Office of Family and Community Advancement, or what we call OFCA, which is holding an open house this Friday, November 3rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 here at the Bowling Building, which is 2300 Washington Street, Nubian Square. Join the district's parent leaders and their children and learn more about the work of OFCA and the resources available to BPS families. Pre-registration is appreciated. More information is available on our website. I also want to share some great news about a new study that was conducted on a longtime BPS partner. It's a partner that goes back decades, the After-School Debate Program. The study was published last week in Educational Evaluation and Policy Analysis, which is a peer-reviewed journal of the American Educational Research Association. The study shows that participating in the program is associated with improvements in ELA achievement and increases in the likelihood that students graduate from high school and enroll in post-secondary education. The study relied on data from the Boston Debate League, BPS, and the National Student Clearinghouse for students enrolled in BPS over a 10-year period, which covered school year 2007 and '08 up through 2017-18. It included more than 3,500 students who participated in the Boston Debate League over that time. As a reminder, the Boston Debate League has been a BPS partner for nearly 20 years and serves close to 700 middle and high school students annually through the debate program. And its resolved program was specifically designed for our Black and Latino young men. They also support the work of our teachers by providing instructional coaching and professional development. Awesome partner that we've had in them for all that time. I'd also like to shout out something you may have seen in the news yesterday. Students and staff at New Mission High School and the seniors from BCLA, which is Boston Community Leadership Academy, they got a surprise visit in Hyde Park from Celtics forward Jason Tatum. Jason spoke to the students about working hard to achieve their goals. Thanks to Mayor Wu and her team for organizing this very, very special event for New Mission and BCLA. Congratulations to O'Brien High School Coach Kevin Gadsden for being chosen as the New England Patriots' High School Football Coach of the Week. In honor of head coach Gadsden, the Kraft family and New England Patriots Charitable Foundation made a $1,000 donation to the OB football program. Congratulations to Coach Gadsden and the OB Tigers. I'd like to close this week with congratulations to our newest City League champions, Madison Park Cardinals, the 2023 City League Volleyball Champions, and the Dragons, both BLAs academies, girls and boys soccer teams were named 2023 City League Soccer Champions. Later tonight, Chief of Human Capital Frances Canty and Rashawn Martin, Acting Managing Director of Retention, Cultivation, and Diversity Programs, will present an annual update on BPS hiring and workforce diversity. That concludes my superintendent's report, and back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. Before I open it up to the committee for questions on the superintendent's report, I'd want to say a few words about the ELL Task Force, which Superintendent referred to earlier in her report. First, I also want to thank the Task Force for their service and commitment to our students and formally accept their resignations. We all share the same goals of improving student outcomes. We also know that what we have been doing is not working. We must do better for our kids. The superintendent has laid out a roadmap to put students' needs and best interests at the forefront of our work while meeting state and federal compliance requirements with DESI regulations and the Successor Settlement Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice. As we heard at our last committee meeting, this work is complicated and is also urgent. I have confidence that the superintendent and her team are working thoughtfully to shift our practices in a way that will better support our students and families. In the coming days, I'll be meeting with school committee staff and members to determine what the next steps are for the ELL Task Force. Tonight, I want to reaffirm our commitment to helping students succeed. We must stay focused on our shared goals. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee on the superintendent's report. I'd also like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes. And I'd also like to remind everyone else to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
I have a question.
Nothing? No questions? No? Still, Neil?
So yeah, two quick points. Thank you for, first of all, congrats to our city champions, which is great to see. I love to see our student athletes succeeding and doing well. Superintendent, you brought up two key areas. One was the ELL work and two was about the Exam School Memo. I actually was on the road this afternoon. I haven't received it, and it's not in a packet. I'm sure we'll be getting it shortly, and I look forward to reading it tomorrow. And I'll have some additional thoughts, but you talked about the four areas, the review and the discussion. And I think that's important for folks to get the historical context behind the tremendous amount of work that was done by a task force to put it together. And so that will be interesting to see. The timeline of the process as well will be helpful. The response to questions and consideration for potential recommendations. I think that was interesting to hear you phrase it that way. I interpret it as, as you get the data, you're opening to considering some things. And I look forward to reading that section. I just want to make sure that one of the questions I had asked, so I was particularly interested in the actual data on the differences in the composite scores between the Title I and the non-Title I schools, both in aggregate and by tier. So I'm assuming we're going to be seeing that, and that will be part of your thinking as well. I think the goal all along is, you know, that was a, the 10 points was kind of a hypothetical number that was chosen. And so getting the data on what the actual is and whether it's this year or a couple of years. But if we have real data, it will be interesting if that's in your consideration for potential. So I just want to kind of get that out there because that was a point that I had raised last week and since I haven't had a chance to read the memo.
Sure. So, through your chair, so I think we certainly, that is one of the data points that we do provide, is the differential between the Title I and the Title II schools and then by tier.
Title I and non-Title I.
Sorry, Title I and non-Title I.
I did the same thing myself.
And then I think member Cadet Hernandez had asked specifically this question about how many students were in a non-Title I school who were socio-economically disadvantaged and whether, how many of them received an invitation and did not receive an invitation? That data is in there. We also compiled, as he asked, in Title I schools, how many students who are not socially, economically disadvantaged are in those schools and received an invite or not an invite? And so this gets down into assigning points to individual students. So we did provide that data as well. And then there's also a few other data points in there. I think for us, in thinking about the potentials, we kind of raise a series of questions that we've heard committee ask and that we are asking as we look at the data to get, you know, to just basically share to the audience that we're thinking about these things as we look at it deeply. We will keep school committee updated. We're still running analysis on some of them. But I think, you know, the goal is to, as we learn more in the data, to bring those observations to you as we think about whether there's any potential recommendations that could be made. I don't think, as a team, we have changed our thinking that it is with one year of data, whether that is truly enough to base the recommendations on. But that said, we heard committee loud and clear that they wanted us to be looking at the data patterns, and so we are doing that.
Okay. And I think this will be worthy of further discussion. You know, if we're making a big change, that may require going back to another task force and kind of reopening that. And I think the city overall, I can't speak for the whole city, obviously, but myself individually, boy, I would really, you know, be nervous about that concept, right? Because this was a long, hard process to get where we are now. But there may be a few opportunities in here, particularly where we made a hypothesis on data, on what something could be, and now we have actual data. And that may be more understood even by task force members who had encouraged us, you know, to be looking at this. So I look forward to reading the memo. And my one question on the ELL Task Force, thank you for your comments, and I listened closely to your first words and do appreciate the work of folks who have done this for years. We have a number of task forces, as the chair said, and people work hard to give us advice and thoughts. This is the ultimate policymaking board, so they advise to us. And thank you for co-chairing it, Ms. Palenka Garcia, as our chair has co-chaired the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force for years. I just want to understand the direction that you are going. Did I hear from your words is aligned with the DESI recommendations and stance for our students, particularly on native language instruction?
That's correct. So, you know, I think we have, before submitting the inclusion plan, there was an incredible amount of work done by Dr. Chen and her team to solicit feedback from many of our standing bodies, community, you know, to be able to ensure that we were getting as broad of an understanding of what people were thinking, what their experiences were. In that process, you know, we're submitting our SIP to DESI. And it became very clear in conversations that we have been functioning, not using and applying the definition of SEI appropriately. And we were told very explicitly, as we should be, that we should not be segregating our multilingual learners, but rather, we should be ensuring that they have access to native language in the context of also having access to English-speaking peers and the appropriate amount of ESL instruction. And so that is, in fact, the basis of the plan. And so what I tried to do in my remarks, and I think what Dr. Chen has in her letters to the task force, but also to the community, is to be explicit that, you know, we are functioning within the work that we need to, within DESI, but also looking at the data of our multilingual learners longitudinally. We are not serving our multilingual learners, and that has to change. And we have to start putting both resources in an appropriate plan in place to ensure moving forward, we can accelerate their proficiency and their ability to be able to interact with their English-speaking peers.
So this is a data-driven decision on your part, based upon outcomes of our students to date, that you are striving for better outcomes, and you are aligning your process with the DESI recommendations or the DESI requirements statewide, is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing that right.
That is correct. And, you know, I think the other part to be explicit is that we will still continue to provide programming for newcomers and for our slave students as they begin to learn their English. And we will still have those particular programs to serve that specialized population.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you. My only follow-up question to that is, and I think we've sort of had this conversation too around this, that nothing is happening tomorrow on any of our work and no changes will be made to any child's, you know, portfolio or placement until the family and the educators and everybody have come together. So nobody will just be moved or placed without there being a full conversation about what is appropriate and what is needed.
I mean, correct. So there's two things. In the case of special education, it is the team process that drives and identification of services. I think in the case of our multilingual learners, it is the model in which we will be serving. So there will be no disruption to services. It's that they will have the opportunity to now be in classrooms where they're still getting ESL. They're still having access to native language. There will be other English-language learners in there. There will also potentially be staff in there who are speaking their native language. And they will also have the ability to be able to be in classes where there are English-speaking peers. So I think it's those pieces that will be, you know, in addition or additive for our multilingual learners.
And I know one of the biggest issues in getting all this to happen is staffing, to be able to have people who speak the language, of the culture, all of the issues, so that we can do these moves and provide more opportunity because we have people that can actually provide the service.
Right. 100%, 100%. And I think it's timely that we'll be hearing our report tonight from Chief Canty and from, you know, Director Martin, because I think what this will really emphasize is that we are doing an incredible amount of positive work in the direction of hiring educators of color and retaining educators of color, as well as leaders of color. And through, you know, some specific changes that Chief Canty is making, we are now going to be tracking very carefully language diversity, right? And so this will be something that hasn't happened in the way it should have in the BPS in the past. But going forward, knowing the importance of that for our young people, to be able to converse and meet others who speak their language, this will be intentionality on the part of, you know, Rashawn Martin and his pipeline work, as well as the whole Human Capital Office.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? No? Thank you all, and I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. As a reminder, public comment will be one hour, and anyone still wanting to testify will have a chance to do so later in the meeting. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up to virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who has not testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 10 speakers this evening. Each person will have 30 minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than three minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from the speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you were from before you begin. We'll begin this evening with our in-person speakers, starting with John Mudd, followed by Sarah Harold and Karen Kane.
Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I am a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. You know, but the public may not be fully aware, that nine members of the ELL Task Force resigned yesterday. We resigned because we believe that the Inclusive Education and OMME plans you submitted to the state will hurt children. The ELL Task Force has repeatedly argued that building on the foundation of native language is the best way to learn academic English and to learn core academic subjects. You have rejected our advice. BPS is doubling down on an English immersion strategy that your own reports show is failing over 90% of EL students. We can no longer appear to tacitly agree with what you are doing. Therefore, we resigned. But we resigned as members of the ELL Task Force. We did not resign as advocates. And I'm going to leap through, you can look at my testimony, I think you have copies, to the issue that was put before by the superintendent and other members of the committee. You say you are driven by a DESI monitoring report that expresses concern about isolation and segregation of students in SEI, language-specific and SEI programs. But DESI only monitored BPS chosen, and I say quote, "chosen" programs. BPS has never implemented the flexibility under the Look Act to expand access to native language beyond dual language. If BPS had chosen to implement transitional bilingual education, the state monitoring report would have been very different. And I have been told that not only by reading the report, but by personnel at a senior level of DESI. So we are not asking you to comply with SEI requirements. We are asking you to take advantage of the flexibility under the Look Act to develop new and creative transitional bilingual education or other programs with the state issues guidance for those programs. So there's no challenge to your ability to implement them. We also are aware that the original DOJ agreement in 2009 talked about blending exposure of students from core academic subjects in a program like TBE with non-academic activities like arts, music, extracurricular activities. And if I had time, I'd read you the full statement. And in our letter, we say, "We want to have traditional bilingual education to meet today's needs."
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
I guess I've exhausted my time. You have my statement. I think it is...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me.
Our next speaker is Sarah Harold.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Harold from West Roxbury, testifying the lack of services compliance within the BPS SpED department. I'm a parent of two SpED kids, my son who is autistic, non-verbal, and my daughter who is dyslexic. The city continues to fail my son by not providing ABA. First in 2021, where I had a poem for not being provided FAP. And now, two years later, after re-entering BPS in September, my son has not received any direct ABA services and has accrued 76 hours due to him. While attempting to get this resolved, BPS made three things very clear to me. One, they are unable to fulfill the ABA hours in my son's IEP for the foreseeable future, violating IDEA. Two, they are able to contract third-party providers, but choose not to. Three, will not provide an out-of-district placement to ensure FAP for my son. In summary, BPS is holding my son's education hostage. What's even more concerning is with the district-wide shortage of ABA staffing... What's even more concerning is with the district-wide shortage of ABA staffing, the city is turning down help from credible third-party providers. Makes me wonder how many hundreds of IEPs for those on the spectrum is the district currently non-compliance with. The district's future inclusion program is not going to fix the gross misconduct and negligence occurring now. In regards to my daughter, she is struggling in ELA as reflected in her MCAS scores. Entering the school year, there was no sped teacher or para in her inclusion classroom. While my daughter started receiving services last week, the IEP is not being executed in compliance consistently. My daughter now documents every service she receives daily. I do not have the faith that corners will not be cut and continue to violate my daughter's rights as the district cannot appropriately staff existing inclusion classrooms. BPS leaves sped families distraught with nowhere to turn except litigation for those with means. Administration should be ashamed for allowing this and other unethical behavior against our children's education to continue. At this point, Boston should concede to DESI and allow them to take receivership over the sped department as they repeatedly violate the rights of some of the most vulnerable and disadvantaged children of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Kane, followed by Paula Grillo.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to speak publicly. I'm the new librarian at Boston Community Leadership Academy McCormick. I'm the school's second librarian. I'm hoping my comments tonight are informative and will encourage all of us to realize fully the potential of and facility plans for BCLA McCormick. Our students' lives really do depend on it. I'm inspired to be here this evening to say what I'll say, in part by a quote my colleague Op gave me from KRS-One's album, Edutainment Track Six. We'll call it the library where we'll bury the lies. I'll speak about BCLA's library later. In the meantime, maybe I'll bury the lies with some truth. Five years ago, in October of 2018, in a Build BPS report, BPS wrote, "The McCormick Building will be fully renovated as a 7th and 12th high school, possibly opening in '22, '23." It's school year '23, '24. The McCormick Building is not yet fully renovated. In fact, it still even has a dirt floor in the basement. That's some truth. In another BPS report, it states, "Throughout the fall and winter of 2019, four years ago, with the McCormick Middle School and BPS High Schools, BCLA Leadership Academy was selected as the high school partner to merge with the McCormick, creating a new school at the Columbia Point location, now called, of course, Harbor Point. Over the next few years, both school communities worked with central office staff and partners in order to renovate the Columbia Point location, align programming, and design a school that met the diverse needs of students." I want you to know, we still don't have that school. We wonder whether or not we ever will. In BCLA's development and dense history, there are many reports, even more meetings, a lot of verbiage, and plenty of unkept promises, even lies. I come before you today to tell you how unhappy our community is with what BPS has done and not done for our school building, our students, our families, and our staff.
Thirty seconds.
How many?
Thirty.
Oh, gosh, I have to talk fast. I come before you to highlight some of the egregiously unkept promises. I'm not going to have time to finish. Our, our seniors are in Hyde Park. I ask you never to do that to a student body again, to break them up. We were promised a brand-new building two years ago. We have a hu, over 100 staff using two toilets. I get to meet every, all my colleagues in the lines waiting to go to the bathroom. That, that really is true. That's more truth.
Ms. Kane.
And I want to give you folks a page from a recent report about the suitability of our building. It's rated at 26%. Can I, may I leave this with you?
Absolutely.
Chair, may we get, may we get her full report as well?
Yes, please.
I'll send it. I'll send it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Grillo, followed by Mano Katsumpanakis.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Paula Grillo, and I'm an 11th grade English teacher at BCLA McCormick. It goes without saying that part of every ELHA teacher's job is to try to get students hooked on learning new words and expanding their vocabulary. And as a person who teaches juniors, I feel lucky that this particular age group is naturally drawn to this hobby. One of the terms I always teach them is placate, because I feel it's one of those words that has a more optimistic definition than it deserves. The literal definition is to stop someone from being angry by giving them something or doing something that pleases them. However, this particular definition doesn't address the manipulative connotation the word placate often carries, as when someone attempts to placate you, they're basically low-key trying to shut you up. I don't want anyone trying to shut my students up, just like any good teacher wouldn't. So, I want them to be aware of the true meaning behind this word. During the summer of 2020, I joined the BCLA McCormick merger design team because taking part in the visioning of a brand-new school greatly appealed to me. We were told that the design team would make decisions with regard to how our students' 21st century learning experiences will look within a 21st century environment. That's what we were told. I resigned from the team when it became apparent that BPS had never intended to give our students access to the state-of-the-art learning environment that was promised to them. I also resigned when a few of my colleagues and I insisted over and over that a 7th through 12th would absolutely not fit in the McCormick building as-is, and we were told that we were wrong. Needless to say, we clearly do not fit since our seniors couldn't move with us due to space limitations. At each design meeting, I witnessed promises going unfulfilled. The original elaborate plan of a brand-new building was downgraded first to extensive additions, such as having brand-new wings added on. Finally, this project turned into a renovation. What we got was a science lab, which I'm pretty sure is like required in any kind of a high school, and a guidance area, and a life skills room that's a necessity for ABA students to access, independent living skills as a part of their transition programming. These add-ons were clearly meant to placate us. Planning started in 2020, yet we still have yet to get usable lockers for our students. We have a tiny library that, that the McCormick staff and families personally put their blood, sweat, and tears into, yet given its size is suitable for preschool. We'll never have an auditorium, and some teachers don't even have whiteboards. We did, however, just yesterday, receive a self-applauding letter from the chief of capital planning claiming that all of the 2023, 2024 renovations were completed on schedule. I failed to see the accuracy of this since our plans included our, our seniors being with us this year rather than being all alone in a hallway of a school across the city in Hyde Park. Yet another attempt to placate. Studies prove that 21st century school facility investments lead to improvements in student test scores, improvements in student attendance, and significant improvements in student effort, largely because in a high-quality environment, students feel valued, thus boosting our intrinsic motivation and interest in learning. When we feel valued, we thrive. Yet, BCLA McCormick students feel anything but valued and are quickly becoming jaded by a district that claims to be committed to being anti-racist. I have so much more to say about that, but I also want to mention your racial equity, the racial equity tool is just really jargon. I'm not seeing how that is working, and that kept being thrown in our face about the racial equity tool being a part of this process, and I just don't see it as being valuable. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, please give our students what they deserve. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Mano Katsumpanakis.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Skipper, committee members. Ms. Sullivan, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Mano Katsumpanakis. I live in Charlestown. I have two amazing children at BPS. Last time, last, my, my last testimony, I went a little off-script. I got a little emotional, and as a result, the Boston Herald quoted me, so I'm going to stick with the script this time. I stood before you many times advocating for change, but all my testimonies combined cannot top those heartfelt speeches given by Elliot and O'Brien students during the last meeting. Those testimonies made me take a step back and rethink my responsibilities to those fearless young minds, and I hope you do the same. White-rich parents using Harvard, BLS, and test prep in the same sentence was my introduction to the exam school world. I was new in Boston. My now-14-year-old son was two, and the conversation happened at a pre-K event. The policy had to change. It was really problematic. The question that I have, is this about equity or racial equality? If racial equality is what your goal is, then allowing students with A and Bs to go to the three schools and use a lottery system will achieve just that based on the Boston demographics. If equity is your goal, then the MAP test, a test that is almost impossible to prep for, has already fixed most of your issues. A perfect example is the O'Brien. Someone called it the best Kip's secret recently. The test preppers did not have it in the radar, and as a result, 80% black and brown and socio-economically diverse. Sadly, that's about to change because you're relocating into an all-white neighborhood in the burbs with no real access to the tea, but that's a different conversation. Now, back to equity. To achieve equity in the admissions policy, the test change wasn't enough. We all agree that a homeless child doesn't have the same chances than one with a ski house in Vermont and a full fridge. Identifying those children and giving them a leg up is all you had to do to achieve your goal. Right now, you're not achieving either. If you continue with this policy as-is, in the next five years, you will be giving hundreds of children with ski houses in Vermont a leg up and nothing to several hundred kids that live below the poverty line. And I'm sure your report is showing that, Madam Skip, Madam Superintendent.
Thirty seconds.
Essentially, you're hurting the same children you're supposed to be serving. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now transition to virtual testimony. Please make sure you're signed in to Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment, and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. Mike Heishman, Dr. Maria Serpa, Deirdre Manning, Kathleen Chardevoyne, and Edith Bazile. Please raise your virtual hand. We'll begin with Mike Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester, second-class citizen. Since March 2020, I've testified at almost every regular BSC meeting. Why didn't I testify at your last meeting? Because of COVID, I chose the safety of Zoom instead of a risky in-person meeting where very few people wear masks. Because I had to get up at 4:15 the next morning to go to work. Because I'm elderly and believe that it's important for me to get a good night's sleep. At 9:15 PM, I gave up my attempt to share my two minutes of testimony. I'm bringing up an issue that is larger than myself. Who are able to attend in-person meetings and thus become privileged to be first in line? Who are the many who would be burdened to attend in person, choose to attend the meeting by Zoom, and are thus treated as second-class citizens? There was no community participation in this decision to privilege the privileged. Chair Robinson just announced the change. No equity analysis, of course. Instead, you segregate the Zoom participants and place them at the back of the bus. Front-page news today. Most of the members of the English language, English Learners Task Force resigned in protest because they want BPS to expand native language instruction. You have failed this very large, vulnerable population for a long time. Instead of drawing, drawing the wagons behind Miss Skipper, I urge you to use their principal protest as an opportunity to rethink your field policy. Thank you, John Mudd, for your great testimony. Every child that attends BPS is entitled to attend a school facility that is safe, healthy, and has the resources to deliver a first-class education. This happens for a few. However, many of our children attend deplorable facilities. I support the vast majority who have testified against your racist O'Brien proposal. Benignness consumes many of our meetings, as some oppose making our exam schools more diverse. Many fear that bad things would happen if their children would not be accepted into our elite schools. There would be no fair if excellent schools existed for every child. Whatever happened to excellence for all? We wait forever to hear about the plans that would eliminate our fears.
Thirty seconds.
BPS and Boston's Green New Deal were promises that the day of deliverance would be coming soon. When will all of our children attend excellent schools? I now believe that this is not the intention of our mayor and superintendent. They accept that many of our children will continue to be harmed and more school communities destroyed. However, the BPS Titanic will build more light boats for the some. The intention for the alleged O'Brien is...
Thank you, Mr. Heishman.
Black, I'm almost done. Black and brown children with a 10 and...
Mr. Heishman, you're at your three minutes. Thank you. Maria Serpa is not in the meeting, so our next speaker will be Deirdre Manning.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I am a Dorchester resident, a single parent, and sole financial supporter for two minor children. I have been a BPS parent since 2016. Both of my daughters attended the William Henderson Inclusion School. I'm incredibly disappointed that I feel that despite the fact that the chair thanks us for participating in public comment, that people don't seem to be listening to what we have to say. I am for opportunities for all children who live in the city of Boston. I feel that 11-year-old children should not be made to suffer the sins of superintendents, mayors, BPS administrators, who have failed in providing quality educational experiences in safe classrooms for all students. I don't understand how you can call the bonus points, bonus points, when so many people get them. My daughters both were planning to stay at the Henderson until they finished sixth grade. I feel that BPS let the school down by failing to respond to safety concerns both before and after our principal was assaulted by a 16-year-old girl. I don't understand why BPS doesn't have a crisis management team that goes in to situations like this instead of simply saying, I think to themselves, oh, oh, um, there's another fire. This time, it's at the Henderson, and they don't do anything. I want my daughters to have opportunities. I don't feel that people who have wealth or go to schools where they have a certain number of children who are financially disadvantaged should get bonus points that they don't need or deserve. It's disingenuous or even dishonest to call them bonus points, because what you're really doing is taking a handful of BPS schools and at least one public charter school that I had to move my daughter to because she could no longer stay at the Henderson, and then penalize them and not allow them to compete on a level playing field. I really don't understand why we're still talking about this. There are school committee members who at least agree in part with some of the points that I'm making. It's really not doing your job if you sit back and say, "We're going to wait and look at more data. The time to act is now." Please do what you are supposed to do. Look out for the interests of all children who live in the city of Boston and allow students to complete, compete, excuse me, on a level playing field. I am all for giving points to people who actually need them, but giving them to so many people that don't need them dilutes the value of them and puts a real disadvantage in front of students who are excluded. Please don't throw these schools and children in them to the wolves. Treat them like they belong in the city and allow them to compete like everyone else. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Chardevoyne.
Hey, good evening. I'm Kathleen Chardevoyne. I'm a BPS parent from Charlestown, and I'm here to speak about the exam school admissions policy, and specifically the memo, which was finally released to the public at 6:10 PM. My first point is that the memo is incomplete. It, it's very disappointing that it does not include the minimum scores by tier, as this was promised two, two weeks ago by the superintendent. These scores are critical to understanding the policy. These scores are critical to understanding the policy's impact. They are also already in the public realm. I have them here. And they're enlightening. They show that families in Tier seven and eight must have at least a ninety-seven point one or ninety-seven point two to gain admission to any exam school. They also show that families in tiers one through five, their children need only score in the sixties and seventies to have access to an exam school. My second point about what's missing from the memo is that there's no mention of allocating seats to tiers based on the number of applicants. I've been advocating for this literally for years. And it's disappointing because it suggests that BPS is just fine with students in Tier five, quite literally on one side of the street, enjoying a ninety-eight percent admission rate while students on the opposite side of the street in Tier seven suffer a forty-eight percent rate of admission. My second point is that the differential analysis in the memo is flawed. The differential of eight points between Title I and non-Title I schools is calculated citywide when the policy does not allow for any citywide competition. The differential must be analyzed within tiers to be meaningful. Let me try to illustrate what I mean. In Tier seven, coming back to this, the top one hundred and twenty-five kids all had scores above a ninety-seven. In Tier one, the top one hundred and twenty-five kids had scores above a sixty-seven. But you're using the scores of the Tier one kids to justify giving bonus points to the one hundred and seventy-six Tier seven kids who are scoring as much as thirty points higher? That is ludicrous. Lastly, the failure to act on what is in this memo is very disappointing. Seventy-six kids in Tier seven received bonus points and invitations when they were not low-income. Yet sixty percent of the total invitations. These two-
Ms. Chardevoyne, I'm sorry. You're at your three minutes. Our next speaker is Edith Bazile.
Hello, and thank you so much. Some school committee members interrogated BPS's inclusion plan, but interrogation is not action. When this body allows the district to submit harmful policies to the state, it ignores the fact that the district failed to fill the chief of OME position since last year. I congratulate the courageous, dedicated EL Task Force members who resigned. These experienced educational leaders, researchers, and advocates with lived experience who worked directly with impacted populations of students and communities were ignored by the district and provided recommendations because they were expected to be a rubber stamp for BPS. The school committee must not be a rubber stamp for BPS. Instead of listening to the feedback of the EL Task Force, BPS took the easy way out by creating a blended model of combining two populations rather than attending to their unique needs and civil rights entitlements of these distinct populations. This plan lacks specifics and evidence-based research. It must be decoupled and reformed because BPS's inclusion plan also lacks the very concept of inclusion. It was presented to but not co-constructed with school leaders, school staff, families, and students. Family engagement is referenced in the plan, but families were not included in the design. The district is going to scale meanwhile special education models of inclusion while the current models are unraveling. Black students are the most racially segregated group of special education students. Where is the racial equity planning tool in this plan? We are the reading specialists in every school. Please learn from Mississippi. Where's the ABA support in every classroom? Meanwhile, central office is getting larger. The longstanding OAG Task Force's mission is to support racial equity work that closes gaps. Yet the administration abolished all of the elements of racial equity. No restorative justice workers in every school, paused cert meetings, racial equity planning tool is abandoned. The Racial Equity Impact Committee was abolished, which I was a part of. The Racial Equity Dashboard was scrapped, and black leaders doing authentic racial equity work terminated. I call on the OAG Task Force to follow the lead of the EL Task Force and refuse to be a rubber stamp. Design and end the facade. And lastly, I call on you to start cutting off people with whom you disagree and give them the extra time that you give other people. There's some disparity in allowing people to use their voices on this platform. If you're going to cut off people at three minutes, you should cut off every person at three minutes. You cut off Mike Heishman, but let other people go on and on. So I advise this-
Right, three minutes, Ms. Bazile. Thank you.
Committee to really take that under advisement. Thank you so much.
Chair, that concludes our speakers for public comment. You can just bring your microphone a little bit closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Before we move on with our agenda, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Vice Chair Michael O'Neill, who's been awarded the Council of Great City Schools 2023 Green Garner Award, the nation's highest honor in urban education leadership. For those of you who are not familiar, this prestigious award is presented by the council each year in memory of Richard R. Green, the first African-American chancellor of the New York City school system, and Edward Garner, who served on the Denver School Board. The award recognizes in alternating years an outstanding superintendent and school board member from seventy-eight of the largest urban public school systems in the country. Mr. O'Neill was among five school board members from big-city school districts who were selected as finalists. The winner was chosen by an independent committee. The superintendent and I were thrilled to be there in person when Mr. O'Neill was honored last week at the Council of the Great City Schools Fall Conference in San Diego. I've been fortunate to work closely with Mr. O'Neill for many years, and I've seen firsthand his deep commitment to improving student outcomes. As a BPS graduate and a fifteen-year member of this committee, Michael knows the district better than just about anyone. He's a leader who listens. He takes the time to build relationships with school leaders, staff, and administrators. He visits classrooms, meets with students, and invites families to be our partner in this work. He's been a champion for special education, food and nutrition, and support of off-track youth. He also provided the district with much-needed stability during multiple leadership transitions at the city and district level. He is the most deserving of this award. As the recipient of the 2023 Green Garner Award, the publishing company Scholastic will give Mr. O'Neill a $10,000 college scholarship to present to a BPS student. We look forward to sharing more details of that in the new year. Now, I'd like to invite Superintendent Skipper to say a few words.
Great, thank you, Chair. So first of all, I want to second that congratulations. So deserved for the Green Garner Award. You know, really, it is the highest urban education leadership award one could get across the country among the largest districts. And to see the other nominees and know how impressive their work, body of work and resume were, but it was never a question in my mind that Vice Chair O'Neill was the one to win it. Having seen both when I was here before and now having returned his dedication to the district, to the city, and to the work of the council working with other districts and making sure that Boston was squarely represented and in a place to be able to share our practice and to learn. A lot of that was forged through Vice Chair O'Neill's work over many, many years. You know, I think that when I, to see when he graciously accepted the award, he literally thanked every superintendent, every mayor, past school committee chair, board members, pretty much everybody that has ever been a part of his career, he took the time and the thought to actually thank. And I think that's very indicative of who he is as a person, to not take the credit but to rather see it in the lens of a team. And so it was very nice to attend the conference for the district to be able to see best practice being shared, to learn from other districts. Our student support team presented and was acknowledged for all of its hard work in its model would succeed Boston. But it was extra special to have somebody from our hometown take home the grand prize. So congratulations. Really proud. And I think we have a video. He's going to love this.
Green Honor Award, when I think of that is, I think of somebody that really has the highest standards, that has contributed and made an impact so broadly in public education. And when I think of Michael O'Neill, that's what I think about. You know, he's somebody that has certainly been throughout my career a fixture here in the Boston Public Schools, somebody that has just represented the best of what school committee represents, really somebody who just aspires to continuous improvement and to holding everyone to the high standards that we should.
He continuously keeps students at the forefront of the work, wants to make sure all voices are being heard, and really wants to make sure not only our students but all students across the country have their needs met and have the greatest opportunities to be successful.
Mike has been a stabilizing force in Boston Public Schools for a lot of years now. You know, particularly, I think about through the work, his work through the pandemic. He was stabilizing, steady. It was a very chaotic time in this district and for everyone at that point. But he's one of the people who has really kind of been a strong, stabilizing, common voice. He's always solutionary, today was his I bet him. It's one of the things that I like the most about him.
Michael's been an unbelievable partner for our school. Everything since my first day as Principal Carter nine years ago. He has been there to listen, to find out what it is that makes our school great and how we can make it even better with the supports from the district and with the supports from the school committee. He has been a driving force in recognizing that our students were being educated in a facility, in a building, that did not come close to meeting their needs and matching their needs. So he was a real partner in working with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Mass School Building Authority to really push through and gain and get a new building that will really be state-of-the-art for our students and really help them to have the educational space that they deserve for maximizing learning.
Hi, everyone. Mayor Michelle Wu here. Congratulations, Vice Chair Michael O'Neill, on receiving the 2023 Council of Great City Schools Green Garner Award. Thank you so much for your service and leadership over the years. As a lifelong resident of Boston and a public school graduate, you've been such a champion for our young people and an incredible partner, advisor for me and so many others in our work to make Boston Public Schools a success for our students and families every single day. I am deeply grateful for all that you do, for your partnership, your dedication to our school district, and I'm so proud to stand alongside everyone here and congratulating you on this well-deserved recognition. Thank you again, Michael, for the difference you've made and continue to make in Boston.
And now we'll open it up to the members for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say, Señor Michael O'Neill, congratulations. Puedo decir que no vino de San Diego con las manos vacías. Vino con diez mil dólares para un estudiante. Y esto es bien importante también. Te felicito porque en el tiempo que te he estado tratando he visto que tienes tus puntos de vista bien claros.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Superintendent, everybody. I would have to say that you came from San Diego not with open hands but with $10,000.
Y esto es importante, que nuestro estudiante de Boston no tan solo está elevando a Boston como distrito sino que un estudiante de Boston, uno de nuestros estudiantes va a ser beneficiado.
So we have to consider that you are a BPS graduate as well. You're not only promoting and making this population of BPS successful, but it's you as a former student that you're being promoted and recognized.
Así que muchas felicidades.
Therefore, congratulations, Mr. O'Neill.
I just want to echo what my fellow members have said and of course Superintendent, and just thanking you for your service. I feel very honored to be able to sit at the table with you. There's a lot for me to sit down and learn from what you've done so far and what's ahead of us. So I just want to congratulate you and thank you again for being such a cheerleader of BPS and also making sure you're holding the district accountable. So I appreciate that.
I'd just like to congratulate you. You always do hard work and always try to make the district better. Yeah, that's right.
Mr. O'Neill, would you like to say a few?
Thank you, Chair. I will make this extraordinarily brief. I never hesitate to talk and am never at a loss of words unless it's talking about myself. And so this makes me extremely uncomfortable. And I had absolutely zero idea I was going to win until they announced my name at the award dinner. And so never play poker against Superintendent Skipper or Chair Robinson because they kept it quiet. And I appreciate that. As has been said, I was a graduate of the district and went into the business community in Boston and found myself sitting in meetings years ago and thought, why am I the only person in these meetings who's a graduate of the Boston Public Schools? And BPS provided me a great opportunity to be successful in my career. And I simply became devoted to trying to help our other students have that same opportunity. And we're not there yet, but I'm very proud of our district and work that we have accomplished and the work that we continue to have in front of us. And I am energized by, I'm thankful for Mayor Wu and her comments and her commitment to public education. It's fantastic to have a mayor who has two children in the Boston Public Schools, and she understands the challenges we face. And her commitment on what we're doing in facilities and other is wonderful. I have said to my wife many times, because I have had the opportunity now to serve under four mayors, Mayor Manino, Mayor Walsh, intro Mayor Janey, whose father was a past chair of the Council of Great City Schools, by the way, and now Mayor Wu. And I said to my wife many times that when a mayor comes along that I disagree with and I cannot support their approach to education, I would stop being on school committee. And now I have finally said to my wife, I have to find a different reason because we have been blessed in the city to have several mayors in a row who are deeply committed to education and are trying to get it right and are trying to make it work. And I do fully support their work. And along with Chair Robinson and Superintendent Skipper, I'm encouraged by the path they're on, and I look forward to us to continuing to improve the district together. And I will say I also learn as much as I give from my fellow members. We all bring unique backgrounds and strengths to this table. And that's the beauty of us working together, that we learn from each other. Believe me, if there's an early education question, I am asking Chair Robinson, and so on and so forth, from each of us the backgrounds that we bring. And we can't be experts in everything, but we can learn. And as Ms. Lima Barbosa said, we push the district and encourage their thinking. And that's our solemn responsibility to the 48,000 students that are in our care to do the best we can for them. And I will close by thanking Ms. Sullivan in particular and Ms. Parvex, who so wonderfully support the Boston School Committee, particularly behind the scenes. So many of you know Ms. Sullivan from school committee meetings. We could not do our work without their enormous support every single day. And it's been the highlight of my career to serve in this committee, and I'm deeply thankful. And we'll leave it at that, and let's get on to- And we'll leave it at that, and let's get on to the business of the committee.
Congratulations again. We'll move on to action items. Our only action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $3,205,595.38. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Do you have any questions? No? Any questions on grants?
I have a question, sure, thank you.
Mr. O'Neal, questions? No questions? All right. If there's no further discussion, I will now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
Save it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Move right into our main report, our annual Hiring and Workforce Diversity Update from the Office of Retention, Cultivation, and Diversity in the Office of Human Capital. I will now invite Frances Canty, Chief of Human Capital, and Rashawn Martin, Acting Managing Director of Retention, Cultivation, and Diversity Programs, to please step forward with the presentation. While they are getting settled, I'd like to invite Superintendent to give opening remarks.
Madam Chair, may I make one more comment if that's possible?
Yes, please.
Because, of course, it immediately hit me how much I, it's also important to thank the incredibly hardworking district staff at BPS, the senior team here at Bowling, many of whom are on this side of the building or that side of the building, who work phenomenally hard hours on behalf of our students, as well as our school leaders and teachers and other school staff that I'd love to visit all the time. But just particular thanks to the senior team, and I know we all share that sentiment, and I obviously wanted to make sure to mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. So tonight, we will provide a report on the district's progress since BPS last updated school committee a year ago, on October 26th of 2022. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion are at the forefront of all that we do in BPS, and that begins with hiring a workforce that reflects the students in this district and in the city we all serve. The majority of the more than 11,000 BPS employees that we employ identify as people of color, or 56%. This is a testament to the commitment of this district and to the hard work of Chief Canty and her team, and the efforts of Acting Manager Director Martin. Tonight's report will delve into several things. First, an increase in school leaders of color, the lowest turnover rate among school leaders in recent years, the continued increase in GARRITI educators of color, the increased language diversity among GARRITI educators, and the different districts' efforts to capture that data, the decrease in job vacancies in school year 2023, '24, and the successes of the district's ongoing recruitment and cultivation work. With that, I will turn it over to the dynamic duo, Chief Canty and Director Martin.
Madam Chair, members of the school committee, my name is Frances Canty, and with me I have Rashawn Martin, Acting Manager, Director of Retention, Cultivation, and Diversity Program. It is a great pleasure to sit before you guys. This is my first time, so. And it is a pleasure to sit before you today to provide an annual update on the critical aspect of hiring and diversity workforce within the Boston Public School. Before I start, I want to thank my data team, who's been working on this for the last month or so, just pulling the data and cleaning it and making sure that we have accurate data tonight. Jessica Ten, Sarah Chimge, and Neve O'Donnell, who are in the atmosphere of being remote and helping me. They're always available via chat. These are dynamic, this is a dynamic group that's really have been extremely resourceful and helpful in helping us source this data. So thank you to my data team, wherever you guys are, because I know you guys are listening. My aim tonight is to share insight into the progress that we've made and our continued dedication to building a workforce that represents the diversity of our students and families, but also embodies our values and drives of our collective success. As you can see from this slide, majority of our staff identify as people of color. Our school-based staffs, such as our assistant principals, our paraprofessionals, our family liaison, program directors, and all positions that are essential for the functioning and support of our students, identify as people of color. This achievement is a testament of our commitment to diversity and inclusive practices, and it reflects the rich tapestry of talent that drives our district. I want to put some context on our workforce that is really important. BPS employs 5.6 of teachers in Massachusetts. However, BPS accounts for 21 of the state's diverse teaching workforce. Furthermore, BPS proudly employs 34% of the state's black teachers, and it's growing. Of course, there is always more work to do, and we will continue to recruit educators of color from the diversity in our Commonwealth and from around the country. There is a lot we can dig into tonight, but we want to highlight one group of employee where we have seen an increase as an example of our intentional work. The growth of school leaders from diverse backgrounds reflects our students' population more accurately, but also brings a broader range of perspective and experience to our schools as a collective. The data reflects our strategic planning around recruitment and retaining school leaders of color, who actively engage in diverse teacher recruitment efforts. They understand the importance of representation and are more likely to seek out and hire teachers from diverse backgrounds. We also understand that having leaders at our schools who reflect our students also support our work to increase the number of educators and school staff of color we hire. Our school, our district has achieved its lowest turnover rate among school leaders in recent years. This is due to multiple efforts by our team. As we critically examine school leaders' salaries, BPS was simply not competing. So the Superintendent prioritized raising school leadership's respective salary, as she has done with other groups in the district. A particularly encouraging aspect of the turnover data is that eight out of the 17 leaders who left their position did so for another position in the district. So out of the 17 who left, eight are still in the district and are still part of the BPS community. This speaks volume about the opportunity that the district provides for our leaders. When leaders transition into, within our district, we not only retain their invaluable experience and institutional knowledge, but also ensures a seamless continuity of our educational initiative. This is a win-win for our district. Our vacancy rates this year are lower than they were at this time last year. We are working with our school leaders to fill vacancies, not just fill seats, but to vet our educator pool with fidelity. While we have, while we have some challenges in areas of paras, but we're collaborating with our recruiting firm to also help us with getting more people in here with para background, as well as working with some initiatives with our partners, so that we can ensure that we have a pipeline of paras that we can get into our schools. We continue to hold job fairs. For example, on Thursday, October 26, Food and Nutrition Services held a job fair where there were over 250 applicants in attendance. On the front of our ABAs, we are currently offering a referral bonus of $500 for any current BPS staff that propose an ABA specialist to be interviewed. Additionally, we are offering a retention bonus for all current ABA specialists, those, all current ABA specialists, but also anyone hired before February 1st of 2024 upon completion of the 2023, 2024 school year. We are also currently working with a recruiting firm to help us hire more additional ABA specialists. We have already seen an uptick in viable ABA candidates, and we hope that will continue. We continue to hire for new opportunities. Please feel free to tell anyone who, to go on our website, to, we would love for them to join the BPS team. We have jobs that are available on the website, and of course, people can always reach out to me or Rashawn. We are looking for people, and if you know them, send them our way. And tonight, just to give you a snapshot of our GARRITI educators, as some of you who are probably watching from home who do not know, the GARRITI order requires BPS to achieve and maintain a desegregated faculty and staff comprising not less than 25% black and 10% other minorities. So the numbers I'm going to speak about will be the GARRITI numbers, and those, that comprises of our teachers and guidance counselors. GARRITI continues to rise. We've made some gains with Latinx educators. Our numbers with black educators remain consistent, but we are aggressively seeking to hire black educators. My colleagues, my colleague Rashawn will speak more about our efforts later on in the presentation. We are actively collaborating with partners to enhance our organizational messaging in order to build a stronger pipeline. Our district boasts numerous pipeline programs designed to target multiple subgroups of the educator workforce with intentionality. However, we are focused on continuous improvement, and we are determined to improve our marketing quality and the visibility of our education opportunity for our educators. And last, we, we've talked about this a few times in the last couple of weeks, and it was very important to us that we highlight the strides that we are making in our linguistic This year, we saw an increase in our linguistic diversity among our GARRITI staff. This is, this is a self-reported data. We are working to make this mandatory reporting within our application process. However, before we can make a language requirement, we do need to work through our collective bargaining process, but this is a priority for the district, and we are going to try to propose this at main table, bargaining with our union, which will begin in just a few months. This district understands that we must provide opportunities for our current educators and school staff to gain the skills to speak another language, and we can do this voluntarily, but it is also something we will work with, with our union partners, so that we can achieve that. Lastly, we want to make, we are, we want to make some modification to our record-keeping to try to capture the linguistic diversity of our current staff, because as I stated, this is not something that the district had traditionally captured, but we are in the process of also making those upgrades so that we can have that information available. From the data we've gathered so far, that we were able to pull, Spanish is the highest language that is spoken in the district, followed by French and Haitian Creole. This will continue to be a priority and part of our work as we recruit and retain our workforce.
Well, good evening, good evening, members of the school committee. As mentioned earlier, my name is Rashawn Martin, and I am the Acting Managing Director of Retention, Cultivation, and Diversity Programs. I'm thrilled to be with you all tonight. The work of retention and cultivation and recruitment is vocational work for me and my team, and we are honored to do it. For the remainder of our presentation, I will speak to our efforts around recruitment, retention, and cultivation of our educators of color, and the programs we offer to support our efforts. Our recruitment pipelines and retention teams, you know, pay special attention to our paraprofessionals and substitutes who are interested in becoming full-time teachers. Of the 110 paras who became teachers, more than half are staff of color, and over 40% of the substitutes. This data reflects some growth and progression, however, we wanted to highlight that more than half of the veteran educators retained are staff of color, and of the more than 500 provisional educators that were rehired, the majority of them are educators of color. It should be noted that we had over 1,000 provisional educators of color last school year, and 92% remain in the district. We are diligently working with these educators to help them with licensure preparation, especially those on waivers or with emergency licenses. And to accomplish this, you know, we provided them with individual consultation, free MTEL prep support, exam vouchers, discounted degree completion program opportunities through any one of our 16 higher education partners, and educator preparation for initial licensure through our Teaching Fellowship or Pathways program. In addition, our office provides support to our internal employees who either seek to transition to the classroom or need support in continuing as a classroom teacher. And more than half of the paraprofessionals, as mentioned, who became teachers or staff of color, and the majority of our provisional rehires were also teachers and counselors of color. Most importantly, we know that recruiting and cultivating educators of color is not enough. We must also do the work to retain them. The attrition rate of our teachers and counselors of color is going in the right direction. In fact, since our retention efforts began in earnest in the spring of 2019, the attrition rate has gone down each year. Since, and not only did we see a decrease in the overall number of teachers and counselors decline from the previous year, the percentage of educators of color also went down from last year, a full percentage point. And while we continue to make gains in slowing the exit rate of our teachers and counselors of color, we have also seen increases in the overall retention rate of our teachers and counselors of color, which has grown by one percentage point each year over the last, you know, four years. And finally, in order to do all of this work, we have a myriad of recruitment, cultivation, and retention programs and services, each designed to directly support our efforts on teacher diversity. Our recruitment team identifies, screens, fosters, and develops BPS's next prospective cohort of diverse talent. Our managers have many, have many years of combined education experience across the district's highest needs, such as math, science, ESL, inclusion, and early childhood. In addition, the recruitment managers and team, along with our recruitment fellows, mirror the ethnic and linguistic diversity of our student body and are fluent in multiple languages, and specifically in Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Chinese and Vietnamese. Our teacher pipeline programs, which is the only end-district, state-approved, grow-your-own model of teacher preparation in Massachusetts. Our accessible, affordable, and culturally-affirming programming has yielded a consistently growing number of licensed teachers in the district who are reflective of and responsive to the young people of Boston. This includes our Teacher Cadet Program, our Accelerated Community to Teacher Program, and our Teaching Fellowship. This includes our teacher cadet program, our accelerated community-to-teacher program, and our teaching fellowship. Through our retention efforts, we are providing safe spaces for our staff of color to connect through our Alana events and affinity groups, giving them direct support, especially to our younger educators, licensure support through, through free MTL and Para exam preparation, and providing professional development and mentoring, and keeping the community informed through our monthly newsletter, which in fact goes out tomorrow morning. I, I want to personally thank the entire RCD team for their tireless efforts, including Sonia Danpat, who's our director of recruitment, Marissa Olivoe, who's our director of teacher pipeline programs, Hojelina Batavon, who is here, one of our teaching fellowship bilingual specialists, Justin Norton, who's our MTL prep specialist, and the entire rest of the team. You know, this work is so important, and so it was an honor to share it with you and the public this evening. And we will now yield our time back to the chair for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canty and Mr. Martin, for that report. I'll now open it up to the questions from the members.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. En la lámina cuatro, me llama mucho la atención que la cantidad de líderes escolares que han contratado, el porcentaje se ha mantenido igual, en cinco punto nueve por ciento.
So, in slide number four, that caught my attention, that I see that the percentage of leaders, Latinos, no?
Sí.
The, the-
Dice que el porcentaje de Latino es el cinco punto nueve por ciento y continúa.
That the percentage for Latinx leaders, it's five point nine. It continues to be the same.
Entonces, mi pregunta es cuán intencional está haciendo el distrito en esta parte para contr, para contratar, para la contratación de estos líderes escolares, porque es bien importante que sean bilingüe, y es algo en lo que han enfatizado.
So, my question to you is how intentional has the district been on this area to hire leaders who are bilingual? It's important for them to be bilingual, and that needs to be highlighted.
Que, cuál es el incentivo, qué incentivo está proponiendo el, el distrito, que es el plan para que estos líderes apliquen, para que vengan a nuestro distrito.
So, what's the incentive? What's the plan? What are you proposing to these leaders so they can apply and they can join the, the district?
So, yes, we understand that certainly there's work that needs to be done in that area. So, we actually, you know, our colleagues, we have an office of, of leadership development that has recently expanded, and, and they're getting some direct recruitment support too. And, and we know that we need to, to tap into our organizations, you know, like Latinos for Education and some of the aspiring Latino, you know, leaders fellowships to be able to directly, you know, target folks who are interested in leadership opportunities from the Latinx community. So, you can, and expect a new, a new effort in, in that, in that, a new focused effort in that space as we, as we now begin the recruitment season for, for school leaders, you know, for, for next school year.
I, I would actually add to that, if I may. So, as Director Martin said, I think this is an area of intentionality, not just school leaders. I think when we look at Latino-Latino population across each of the areas, given our student population, there is a mismatch. And so, we have to be very intentional back from teacher positions all the way into central office positions to make sure that there's pipeline at each opportunity. So, this is something with Monica Hall, who is working on the leadership development pieces that, you know, Director Martin will intentionally look at. We're trying to expand the number of leadership development programs that we have in the district. So, this is, to your, to your point, an area of focus both in who we're recruiting and supporting, but also in the quality of the programs that we're, we're partnering with.
Thank you. Ah, mi segunda pregunta es con relación a que escuché que ustedes dan un incentivo para recomendación. Háblanos un poco más sobre el incentivo para que las personas que estén escuchando esta reunión puedan entender esa parte, porque creo que hablaste incluso de una cantidad de dinero que se le, que se le gratificaba por recomendar.
My second question is that you talked about an incentive for referrals. Can you speak a little bit more about that? And I, I believe you've mentioned a specific amount. For, I want the folks who are listening for this tonight, especially when the referral, I think you mentioned a specific amount.
Yes. So, we are offering a referral of five hundred dollars for any, for any current BPS. Any, any current BPS employee can, can propose and put forth a person to be an ABA specialist. So, any current BPS staff can propose for someone to be an ABA specialist. It's five hundred dollars, and we are offering a thousand dollars for employees, ABA specialists who retain, who remain in the district for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. So, we have two things going on. We have the referral bonus, and then we have the retention bonus. So, one is for five hundred dollars for the referral, and the other one is a thousand for the retention.
And if I may, just provide context, this, this is a great example of working in partnership and with the union. So, with the, with the incredible increase in autism diagnoses, ABAs are in very high demand. So, when you look at our para vacancies in the hundred and seventy-five, I believe that's on the sheet, there's a good portion of those vacancies that are ABA specialists. Recognizing the issue and wanting to make sure there's continuity of service, we partnered and brainstormed with the union about, one, how could we make sure to retain the current staff we have? And then, two, how could we additionally recruit back into BPS those that might be working in private sector or from somewhere else? And that's really the genesis of this idea of retention and recruitment. I think in some of our harder-to-fill positions, ESL might be another, special education, certain sectors would be another. These will be strategies that, as a district, we are going to want to look at, in addition to potentially early hire. We want to make BPS as competitive as possible to get the staff who's going to be able to serve our students the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation. My nine-to-five job, I'm a director of recruiter, recruit, recruitment at Duette. I'm not recruiting folks to, for jobs, I'm trying to get them degrees. But I've had the pleasure of attending some events where your team is tabling as well. And at the Fenway CDC Career Fair, I was sitting right next to one of your recruitment managers and had the ability to really see her just being able to speak Haitian Creole and Spanish. Then she's helping me translating someone with duetes and Haitian Creole. So, it was just good to see how, you know, language really matters in this time, and to see them in action, and be able to talk not only about positions as educators, but the many positions that are definitely still open, and hopefully, all of us can amplify them. But with that, I appreciate the last slide, really touching upon the recruitment, the cultivating, and the retention efforts. A lot of the times, folks are leaving the district or live in the city because we just can't afford to live in the city of Boston for many reasons. You think about housing, you think about transportation. So, I don't know if today or another time, if there's any type of coordination effort that's been done with the city to really look into like how the district is making sure that folks are not leaving because of housing. Folks are not leaving because of transportation. So, just trying to see like how those efforts are also being thought, thought of or considered as we are thinking about hiring, cultivating, and retention. Because often, I hear about incentives. I know those are worked for very specific position, but the district can't do it all. I know there's a lot of other folks outside of BPS that are departments that have to be part of it. So, we'd really love to hear more about if those coordinations are happening. If not, if we can put a thought about that as well.
So, those are early conversations that we are having. We, we understand that this is a very expensive city. It's not for the faint of heart or the pockets. So, these are conversations that we are starting to have, whereas we want to recruit educators of color. Like, if you go and recruit an educator of color in North Carolina and bring them to Boston, the cost is exorbitant, like, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a sticker shock for, for people. So, those are conversations that we initially, we are starting to have about what does it look like to bring people to this amazing place that's extremely expensive? And we are mindful about that, and we, you know, we're exploring a lot of avenues of how do we make this work, thinking about partnerships that will be able to help us, assist us with these, with, with these things that these individuals will need when they come into the city. So, thank you for mentioning that, but we are starting to have those discussions about what will it look like to bring individuals to this amazing Commonwealth.
And I can imagine that some of those conversations happen during collective bargaining conversations as well, when we're trying to get our different positions the best contract so they can definitely stay. But again, just really amplifying the, that the district can't do it alone. And then we have to talk with our friends at City Hall, especially those that are responsible of making sure that these services are accessible and affordable and really, can really make sure that we keep our talents here as well. So, thank you for that. You answered a lot of the, of what the recruitment efforts are. I think for me, it's just good that we continue to see that throughout the year. I know it's a lot of work that you all are putting in. I really appreciate the report and looking forward to see how I can support as well as a committee member. So, thank you so much.
Sure, sure. And I'll just add, just now, in the meantime, you know, we don't miss any opportunity to collaborate with the city. You know, we've done a, a ton of, you know, joint recruitment fairs with them or anytime they're having an event, you know, we are, we are there. And I'll just say, we also are very appreciative of the strong partnership that our office has with Duette, you know, for degree completion. We have a number of people on the staff who are taking advantage of those degree programs, especially staff here in central office, because there are a lot of, we have a lot of positions where you don't necessarily, you know, always need a degree, you know, to sort of get started. But for people to move up for, for certain opportunities, you do need to have one. And, you know, folks have rolled into the Duette program because you guys make it easy. And so, we're really, we're really thrilled, you know, to have, you know, to have you as one of our degree completion partners. So, thank you.
And also, we've, we are lucky in the, this great, amazing recruitment staff. They've already set the, the calendar for this year for recruiting opportunities that they've, that they've set up. And we are happy to send some of the information to you guys. Would love to see you at some of the events that we have coming up. So, we'll share some of those dates with you, so you can, if you want to be part of that, that would be amazing for us.
Last question, if I still have time. Are the family liaisons sort of also another communication channel that you have of these positions? Because we have parents and caregivers that possibly, you know, we could entertain, I don't know, if family engagement, family liaison. Again, also the cross-departmental collaboration of spreading the word of these positions and the many cultivation opportunities that are out there. Not really a question, just more like an idea, but, but thank you again.
Oh, the short answer is, is yes. And I'll just, obviously, just also add that, you know, we have, just outside the school committee room, and that's really for anyone who's here, you know, we have the flyers for all of the programs and resources that our office has, and we welcome, you know, you and everyone else to take information with them, you know, for their various constituencies.
I just want to just highlight the great work with Director Martin and his team. To give a sense, in two thousand twenty-one, as we were coming off the pandemic and the state kind of opened up our ability to do waivers and licensure, we had a much larger pool of teachers and educators without license who needed to work to get it. And I think what you see between two thousand and twenty-two last year and now this year is an intentionality in Director Martin's team and his vision and leadership to literally work educator by educator to get that to happen. Whereas in other districts, you know, folks just kind of had to figure it out, and they left, and they actually came to us, and then we helped figure it out. But that only happened because they were so intentional and because we have the pipeline programs to be able to afford for folks. So, you have to have both, right, as we do this. But I just can't say enough, because I was privileged to be in those meetings and to literally see spreadsheets of the work that, that these guys were doing. And that was a tremendous service to our district because making sure that we are retaining as many educators of color and leaders of color is our priority. And they helped to, they continue to help to fulfill that.
Thank you.
Just pick, tired. Just picking back off of what Mrs. Palenco Garcia said. It's just regarding the same issue about teachers, I just wanted to ask a little bit more info, I guess.
What would you like to know specifically, there?
What's, what's the plan to get more educate, Hispanic educators?
Well, it, well, it certainly helps that we've been able to grow our recruitment team. We really basically have doubled it, you know, since I first came to the office. And then it's very important that we have a strategically diverse recruitment team that, that can go into places and spaces where, you know, where the district hadn't been able to traditionally go because we didn't have the, we didn't have the staff. So, you know, so we're really thinking about how do we create stronger partnerships with our, with our HSIs, like our Hispanic-serving institutes, you know, institutes, you know, finding the, the local or even sort of regional and national programs, you know, that are, that are targeting, you know, aspiring, you know, Latinx educators, and, and just being sure that we're, that we're showing up and that, you know, and that we're getting there first, and, and that we're, you know, encouraging people to apply. But then also, you know, getting them, getting them in front of our, of our school leaders and getting them in front of our school leaders early, you know, so that way, you know, our schools will have first dibs, you know, when it's tired, tired, time to hire them. So, you know, we're working, you know, long nights, you know, it is a real, it's a real hustle. It's a real grassroots effort, but, but the energy, but the energy is there. And so, from your own standpoint, if you, if, if you think there is a place or an organization that we might be able to, you know, tap into, to find, you know, more educators of color, especially Latinx educators, you just send them our way, and we'll be sure we reach out.
Okay. You have another question?
Ask a question?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you for the presentation tonight. If, if we are truly a student outcome-focused governance body, right, we should be talking about only, only mainly talking about student outcomes or our goals around student outcomes, and then our guardrails or values around what's it take to get there. And one of our guardrails is having a workforce that is culturally responsive, diverse, represents the district. And so, the work that you're doing towards that is critical. And so, I'm glad we're digging in on this. I do have a couple of questions. The first, and Director Martin, this is more under what you spoke about. And first of all, thank you both for the work that you're doing. These trends are encouraging. I recognize how hard it's been as, you know, we came out of a pandemic and all of a sudden, you know, we arrived a situation where districts everywhere had shortfalls, from bus drivers to, to teachers, to school- from bus drivers to, to teachers, to school leaders. You know, there was a, a large swath of folks who decided to retire versus coming back in person. And again, this is not just us. This is districts across the state and districts across the country. And the challenges have been enormous. And so the work that you have done has been excellent. A couple of questions I want to ask about, Director Martin, you talked about cultivation and some of the various areas that you're working on. And, and I love the various pipelines, the three pipelines that you talked about. And I know the teacher cadet program particularly has been coming. And I'm reflecting back on Dean Coleman, where Dr. Coleman, who was the dean of the School of Ed at BU and was a member of this body for many years, and he talked about the challenges of getting students of color into education schools interested in the opportunity to become teachers. And so, you know, when we looked at our percent of hiring versus the potential pool that were coming through the education schools, you know, we were getting a lot of candidates, obviously, but the pool didn't seem big enough. So I'm just interested in, are you also looking at that as well? Are we talking to the schools of ed in the area to continue to try to increase the potential pool, so to speak?
The answer is yes. You know, it's, it's really just about a daily conversation. So one, one space where we've really grown capacity is that we have, we have such a high number of direct partners now who are helping us in this work, you know. I mean, it sort of started really with, with BU, you know, Northeastern. We've got BC on board, you know, but now we've got Simmons. I mean, like, you know, we have over 16, you know, partners who have directly agreed to, to support us in this work. So it's really going twofold. One, one, we're, we're working with them daily to, to reach the students that, that they have, who are in their programs, and also even giving them ideas about how they can recruit for their ed programs so that then we can hire them, all right? While at the same time, they are supporting us directly with, with, with taking the employees that need those ed prep programs, you know, who are already working for us. You know, which is critical, because, you know, if you're doing this job every day, you don't have time to look for school. So if I can just send you to one of our partners, if you're a parent, if you're a sub, if you're, you know, if you're, if you're an emergency licensed teacher, somebody on a waiver and you need one of these programs, we're just sending you right to one of our partners, all right? So, so we have our own people, I mean, in our ed prep program, in the higher ed prep program spaces. And we also, and we also supporting their efforts to bring more people in. And then we're, and then we're hiring them. So now we're, we're getting first invitation to any, you know, to any fairs that they're having at their schools. You know, we're meeting directly with their, with their deans, with their career services offices. It really has been a, it really has been a really ro, sort of robust effort. And it continues to grow. And we even talked to, you know, we even talked to Cambridge College today, you know, who, who wants to, who wants, who wants to do something, so.
Great, thank you.
I, I also think, again, to Dr. Martin, to Director Martin's vision, but we, we've also started to talk about our student pipeline. You know, our own student pipeline and to explore programs like Call Me Mister, where, you know, they're rooted in an undergraduate program for young men of color who are interested in teaching. And there's lots of opportunity to get those college degrees covered. So I think, you know, we're, we're trying to look at pipeline all the way back, much like when we think about teacher pipeline, we think about para pipeline. And how does that sort of lead in? And then we go back to parent leader pipeline, right? So I think these are the, this is the comprehensive plan that we are attempting to do and to resource it as such, so that we, we, we have what it takes to be able to build these numbers up every single year in our classrooms.
Excellent, thank you. Couple, a couple more questions. So if we could do a deeper dive for a second on the resignation, non-renewal, and retirement slide. We obviously understand retirements, that's an individual's choice. Resignation and non-renewals, though, if we kind of take those two and separate them out from resignation, because for the total, the exits you had, for example, 381, I'm just wondering roughly, you know, are we down on the numbers of resignations and non-renewals? And particularly on the non-renewal piece, I know a big issue in past years, which you've already talked about, was the licensure issues, right? And so in the past years, we've had large numbers of non-renewals because of licensure. Instead, we've now had this concerted effort to help folks get licensed. So I'm just wondering, are we seeing a downward trend on that versus the overall group? And, and if you want to get back to us on that data, that, that would be fine. Because you may not have it broken out, but I just, because in my mind, I see a difference between the resignation and non-renewals versus the retirements, so. And, and it makes me think of, it is no surprise in Boston or in the state or, or across the country that federal funding is going to slow down pretty substantially next year, right? ESF funding is going to be gone. And we are going to have districts that have not planned appropriately and are going to be having layoffs, plain and simple. It's in the papers all the time. And we've certainly tried to do some planning as well. So I hope there's some intentionality and thoughtfulness around that to make sure even as we shift folks onto ESF positions that may slowly have less funding or even an opportunity to recruit from other districts, right? Let's, let's remember that this-
We're always thinking about that, every day.
Okay. Particularly, you know, a lot of times in many districts in Massachusetts, it's last in, first out, right?
Yes.
And so there may be an opportunity to pick some, pick up some folks that are newer to the profession, but don't have the tenure exact, exactly, but this is an opportunity for us.
Which is-
For no fault of their own, it's because of funding questions, right?
Yes. And it's funny you mention that, because the superintendent and myself were talking about that today, about potential recruiting from some other places that have some challenges right now. So we are always thinking about how-
Great minds think alike.
Yeah, so, yes, we are thinking of those, those opportunities for growth, of course. And we're probably going to act on some of them as we speak.
Thank you. And, and then also even as we face, you know, some budget decisions next year, let's make sure we're thinking about, you know, openings, permanent positions, how we retain folks and get them licensed and trained if they're appropriate for other positions that we have. Which brings me to, I was just trying to do the math on open positions. And so if I do my math correctly, which may be wrong, it looked like if we have, I'm flipping to the slide. If we have 678 open positions and you list three, paraprofessionals, managerial, and cafeteria, that equals 288. So to me, it says there were 390 in other categories. I'm wondering how many of that are actually teachers? Do we know what the teacher opening is at this point?
Yes, we do.
I think it was about 160 when I looked.
Is it 160?
It was roughly around 160. Again, there, some of the, you have to differentiate between like classroom teachers versus teachers that are in like other kinds of roles. But I think it was somewhere around like 160, 170.
1, 1, 127.
Oh, okay.
We're a little bit, we're a little bit, we've been, my team have been going out to, to the schools. We are, we are urging our school leaders to try to hire as much as they can. So we're working diligently to try to get those positions filled as people either leave for whatever various reasons. And there are some of, we, most of our positions continue to be the, the areas where we always had problems hiring, which is like our STEMS, our ESL. So those are some of the openings that we have that have been a challenge for us. And we realize those challenges. One of the things that we're, we've been, we're going to do is we're having an early STEM fair so that we can make sure that we capture those, those educators early because of the challenges that we have with certain positions in the district. And even going into the school year, we, we've been working diligently to like, where can we find these hard to find positions by either getting fairs going, working with different organizations to, to help us with the recruitment of these positions? But these positions are generally like, are hard to fill positions that we are working diligently to get.
So when you tell me that number, it works out to about an average of one per school, but do we have schools that have larger concentrations that are causing severe problems?
Yes, like the Madison always have, will always have an issue because like that content, CTE licenses are extremely hard to get. It's hard to find people with those specialized backgrounds. So that's one of the areas that we generally have those concentration of issues with.
Which, which says to me, the reach out to the trades and particularly getting, you know, retiring members from the trades who want to come back and, and teach is critical.
Absolutely. I think, you know, the other thing that helped us greatly this year was, in the past, we have not been able to hire ESL teachers on waiver and then work with them to get credentialing. We were able to work with DOJ and DESI to be able to do that. And that has been instrumental, because now we have in the pipeline a whole body of teachers who are working to get that ESL certification, right? And we know that that's so desperately needed. But the regional model works so well here, because the regional supes and then within that network, the hiring specialists, they work hand in hand in human capital to look at every single school. And so if we see, say, in a school that you have multiple maternities or paternities, which happen during the year, then we work to shift resource to help that school. So it helps us to be very nimble and kind of figure, be able to respond like very appropriately and quickly to schools' hiring needs.
Thank you. And Chair, I see I'm out of time. I do have one more question. I'm glad to wait if others want to chime in.
Does anybody else have another question?
One more time. I'll just ask one final question, because when I think again about retention, to me, such a key part of that is the evaluation process. You know, we owe it, we have an obligation to all of our employees to have a fair and effective evaluation that both tells them what they're succeeding at and what their opportunities for improvement are. And just as this body did the superintendent's evaluation on time, as required by her, I think we made it by one day, as required by her contract. You know, this body has continuously stressed the importance of having an evaluation process for all of our employees. It's not just the school leaders doing the teachers, but it's the district folks doing the school leaders. It's the superintendent doing the district team. And then also, quite frankly, this body should not only be evaluating the superintendent, the chair and I both sat in a presentation of another board that does a self-evaluation. It's something for us to consider. And I wouldn't be surprised if the chair makes us start doing that. But if you could talk to me for a minute about where do we stand on the evaluation process? And do we know timing wise, you know, what percent were done? And, and again, if this is information you want to provide back to us, that would be fine. But would be very interested in seeing, and not just the teachers getting their evaluations, but how many school leaders got their evaluations in time? How many district staff, including the district superintendents, got their evaluations on time, et cetera?
We will definitely try to get that number, those numbers to you. We, we do have an evaluation team that assists with the process. And for years, we were paper-based and now we are, we have a, a program that's called Vector that does most of our evaluation. But I want to be sure that I get you accurate numbers that reflect the work we've done.
Okay.
And we're also not leaving around an island anymore, Michael. So our educator support program, which is a great collaboration between the performance management team and the union, you know, that's providing direct support for some of our, our educators who, who may just need some additional assistance to meet some of those, some of those recommendations and, you know, you know, provided by their school leaders in order to, you know, in order to improve their proficiency. So, you know, so not only are we trying to make sure that people get evaluated on time, we're also trying to give you more support through the process.
That's just right, because not just getting an evaluation, it's actually being told what you're doing. And I've had it through my entire career, right? Here's what you're doing well, and here's some more opportunities for improvement. And how do we work together to help you get there? So if some of our teachers are struggling, you know, we'd love to know what we're doing about that and how we're supporting them. And if ultimately that doesn't work, you know, that may lead to an exit. But, you know, that we're being proactive in trying to address that and provide those opportunities for our educators.
Sure, yes. So if we can have veteran teachers or coaches who are part of this program, you know, who can support educators, you know, after they, you know, receive, you know, a prescription, you know, and maybe they just need some modeling, all right? And, you know, on, on, on what this prescription, you know, means for me as an individual, you know, then that will help to, you know, accelerate my ability to be able to, you know, to show, you know, you know, my school leader, you know, that I have made these, that I have made these improvements. You know, and it goes a long way to, you know, to just another thing, you know, supporting our retention efforts. And, and we find that it's a, it's a support that a lot of our educators at first didn't even, didn't, didn't even know existed. So now we're also doing a better job making sure that, you know, that our educators are available, that this, you know, are, are, you know, know that this resource is available for them.
It's incumbent upon us as a district to provide those support to our teachers who are leading our classrooms, right? Because our students deserve to have the best teacher possible. And everyone can always improve and it's no reflection on how they're doing now. But, you know, when we have those coaching supports, it's so valuable. I say all the time, even Tom Brady had a quarterback coach, right? We can all always improve in how we're doing and we can benefit from having, you know, someone looking at our work and making some suggestions. So I'm really going to be interested in hearing that about the evaluation piece, because to me, that's a key component of the retention as well. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can be creative with some of our recruitment? For example, we are a college town. Is there any ability to look at joint appointments between college adjunct professors and working part-time in BPS, particularly in the areas of STEM or in other areas where we really need good educators, but they may not be available in the traditional way?
I like that idea. That's a great idea. We definitely can explore that. That is an option that, you know, all options are on the table with this, with recruitment, especially for the, the subject matters that are typically hard for us to cover. That is a excellent idea and we will certainly explore how can we, how can we do that?
In that same vein, are we able to recruit internationally? I mean, I know that in other districts, we learned last week, people are, you know, getting, you know, particularly from the countries where our children are from. We, we talk about wanting culturally relevant educators and, you know.
Yeah. Yes, so that's, that's a, there's a lot of legal things that's involved in that of us bringing someone here on a visa, that like we're, we're trying to work through some of those processes. We've had some, we've had some successes, but like this is something that we are continuing to work on, because it takes, there is a legal component of how do you, in our capacity and ability to, to, to actually host it. So this is some, a conversation we are having with the city about BPS being able to do this.
Well, I will say, if, you know, advocacy for the governor's support of, you know, in trying to quickly, you know, improve the process of, of, of work authorization, you know, especially, you know, for immigrants might go a long way. But, you know, but yeah, we're definitely, you know, definitely looking into it.
Yeah. And my last question is a little bit about the Garity educators. That is now approximately 50 years old, the Garity ruling. We are a very different district today than we were then. And particularly, I agree with Ms. Palenko Garcia, that the numbers of Spanish-speaking educators, school leaders, et cetera, in a district that now has much more of a majority of Spanish-speaking kids is not where it needs to be to really reflect the needs of who we are serving. So I'm happy to see the, the continued push for more Black educators. But I'm concerned that we don't have a Garity order, but we have a personal imperative that we need to have a similar kind of push for making sure that we are getting educators that reflect the diversity of the kids that we have. And when I look at those 11 languages that are our primary languages, the majority of those languages are kids of color. I know we have 100 languages spoken overall in the district. And so it'd be interesting to see where the others fall and, but, you know, how do we get that urgency out to literally the city around what we need to be doing different around this recruitment and retention?
And I think this is a both and, you know- Right. And I think this is a both-and, um, you know, and, uh, one of the things that Director Martin and, uh, his team have been working on, as, as well as Chief Canty, is the hiring goals at each of the schools. Um, we've put, placed a lot of emphasis on this, um, and our leaders have responded in a, in a really positive way, to be very intentional with hiring. And then, you know, we've also looked at some policy, internal policy shift as a way to, um, continue to provide flexibility for our school leaders in their hiring, to ensure the diversity of that staff. Um, but I think, to your point, Chair, it is both, um, while it is true, it is fifty years, we are still not at twenty-five percent.
Yeah, that's sad.
And so, we will be at twenty-five percent and higher. And we will int- continue to increase our Latin, Latino and Latina teachers in particular, and leaders, because that is significantly important to our students.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. Um, I think, uh, you know, we've just, uh, we've just have decided that, you know, we're going to be, you know, more, more intentional, and I think, when I finally think about it historically, especially within the Latinx teacher population, we, we sort of started with, you know, a low number, and now we're really, you know, moving, uh, you know, trying to move that number. But we understand that none of these percentages are the, you know, are, are the ceiling, right? They're rarely, you know, kind of a floor, and it's, and it's a low floor, you know, so, um, but, uh, but, you know, you can, you can guarantee that we're committed to sort of leaving no stone unturned, you know, to try, you know, to, uh, to find, um, you know, folks who look like our kids, you know, to bring them here, uh, to bring them here into the district. And we are, and we are partnering with, uh, um, with, uh, with every, you know, organization possible that has a touch point with, um, uh, um, you know, with communities of color, you know, to see how we can, you know, um, how they can support us in being able to, uh, you know, to close these gaps.
I noted, or, in, early in, in the conversation around the recruitment or the need for ABAs, and my question is, I personally, I don't know what the training is for someone to become an ABA, and is that the kind of a program that we might need to create in order to grow our own like we are in other areas as well?
Yeah, we do, we, we offer it.
Yes.
And, and we do. Uh, so, but, but I, again, I think incentivizing, there's a lot of competition in this area with the private sector, unfortunately, uh, and consult, and, you know, and so, um, we would much rather have a trained workforce working for us with our children than relying on third party. And many districts are having to rely on third party because third party competes with us for that workforce. So I think this is why we're trying, similar to the bus drivers, right, very much be creative about creating our own certification and training programs.
Okay.
Good point, Chair.
Okay. Um, and I just forgot what my last question is, so I'll let it go. Um, but thank you all very much. I think before we end, is anybody else?
One very quick question. I noticed in the Equity Impact Statement, uh, that you mentioned the addition of two George B. Cox Equity and Urban Education Fellows. And first of all, how do we miss an opportunity to, um, again, respect the legacy of Mr. George B. Cox and, and all he did in, in this, um, in this field, right? And I love the fact that there are fellows named in honor of him, and I'm wondering specifically what their work is.
Yeah. So, uh, so in fact, we have four, which we're thrilled by, you know, uh, two, uh, two that we started with in the general fund, and then two that were Esser, Esser-funded, and then, of course, I'm advocating to, you know, keep my two Essers, uh, just throw it out there. But, um, so, uh, so they, um, so, so each of the fellowship roles was tied to a part of the work. So there's, so there's one fellow, um, who's, um, who actually were, um, um, who were getting ready to, uh, to hire, because the first fellow actually moved up into, uh, into a more, um, more sort of full-time, but kind of a, you know, senior role, uh, in the office as our RCD coordinator. But, um, but one position is, uh, supports the pipeline programs, helping us recruiting for ACTT, and also supporting the teachers who are in the fellowship. Uh, one of the fellows, uh, directly supports retention, you know, um, and really, you know, does a lot of our, um, a lot of programming, and, uh, you know, and just can, and just being out there to connect with our, our educators of color, to be sure that they know about all the resources that, um, that, um, uh, um, you know, that we have. Uh, then the, then the Teacher Cadet Program, um, has, uh, has a George Cox, uh, Cox Fellow, um, and in fact, a young woman, um, who's going to be starting with us on Monday, who was interning in the program, um, who I believe is also a BPS alum, but she's going to be supporting, um, all of the students who are currently in our, um, who are currently in our teacher, uh, um, Cadet Program. Uh, and then we have one more for like analytics, like who's really helping us with some of the data programmatically, because it's one thing for us to provide, you know, all of these, uh, you know, all of these programs. I have to, I have to be sure I understand how many of my educators of color are actually, you know, taking advantage of our resources? How often are they taking advantage of them? You know, and so that way we can figure out, okay, this is obviously stuff that people need, so we need to offer more there, but maybe, you know, these, some of these, um, some of these programs, maybe not so much, and maybe we, you know, maybe we have to do something different. So those are the four, so those are the four areas. We're thrilled, um, with the young, uh, you know, sort of young professional folks of color who have taken advantage of these, uh, kind of entry-level positions, but designed, um, for folks who were interested and passionate about the, um, about the work that we know that George Cox, you know, was, um, you know, was beating the door down around, you know, every, you know, um, every day. So we're honored, you know, um, and they're proud. You know, when they introduce themselves in any space, they're like, oh, I'm the George Cox, you know, Equity and Urban Education Fellow, like, you know, and, uh, so it, it, it's really a big deal, a bit, um, a big deal for us. And you're right, we probably should at some point find some way to, to more publicly recognize that experience. I'd be happy to bring the fellows here to the school committee, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm sure they would be, they'd be, they'd be thrilled by that.
I, I hope they don't feel it's a burden to live up to the high bar of the name of the fellow, but rather, I hope they feel lifted up on the shoulders of the legacy of his work for many years.
Oh, yes, I think so. And I think some of them know, and then some of them have just learned about, you know, who George Cox was and the, and the work that he did, and the difference that he made in the community, and they're like, um, and they're like, yes, and actually, I think, gives them more, you know, just more passion and energy about, about trying to support the work that they've been asked to do.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I remembered my last question. So, as the district moves towards full inclusion, um, how are we working with the education colleges and others in terms of the preparation of teachers coming out who have more, um, experience with special ed, the wide variety of issues there, or are all coming out speaking another language, so that we're not having to retrofit and look for it? So how are we getting educators who come really with the skills that we're going to need to move our district?
Uh, sure. Well, from my office's standpoint, we're making sure that we're having the conversations with our ed prep partners, um, for them to understand the work that we're currently doing in our own ed preparation programs, right? Um, and so, here's a real opportunity or need, which, you know, we've made, you know, and I've made some recent investment and quest, where we're going to try to expand the staff, you know, of our pipeline programs, because if I can grow the fellowship, then we can, then we can train more people to be licensed in special education ourselves, right, and to also be ESL, you know, licensed and certified, you know, ourselves. And then it also, you know, allows us to grow the ACTT program, which then we're training the people who are coming into the field, you know, ourselves, right? So that gives us a larger pool here, alright, um, but we're going to meet the DESI requirements. I have to have, you know, a few more specialists to be able to serve more people. And then at the same time, we, you know, we have to, we are intentionally really just sort of telling our ed prep partners, well, this is what the BPS is doing, and while we're training our own, we need to be sure that you're, you know, that you're training the folks that you have, you know, uh, you know, um, you know, the, the, the same way, right? And the incentive is, is that, once we know that you're doing that through our partnership with the laws of board, we'll hire them, alright? And that's an incentive for our ed prep partners, which they're doing, because now they're, because now they're recruiting for their own ed prep programs, saying, hey, come to our ed prep program, because we have this partnership with the Boston Public Schools, and we're going to train you up, and guess what? You know, I mean, when you're finished with us, you'll be hired with the BPS. And I think, you know, there are a number of folks, you know, who are like, well, you know, I'll do that. So, so we're making sort of that two-prong, uh, um, sort of, sort of, sort of that two-prong approach. And we're talking to everybody, you know, who wants in, just like when we talked to Cambridge College earlier this afternoon.
And we just, um, we just had a meeting recently with UMass, um, expressing to them some of, uh, um, the things that we are doing in the district. So we are putting people on notice about some of the things that are coming down, and how they can be a partner in some of this work.
Great, great. Well, again, thank you for your work, and we look forward to the next update.
Sure, you're welcome. Thank you.
Well, now move on to public comments on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers or comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there any new business? Wow. Well, that concludes our business for this evening. The next hybrid school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, November fifteenth, at six P.M. at the Bowling Building. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none. Um, is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good night.